Okay, we'll call a regular city council meeting June 21st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The order, please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vote call, please.
Mayor Allison?
Here.
Tom Baylor?
Here.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Casey Kinsman?
Here.
Belina Meyer is absent. Ann Schaefer?
Here.
Kristin Carpenter?
Here.
And Ken Jones?
Here.
That's a form of council.
No mics?
No, because we don't have anybody on the phone. And there's no reason to, I guess.
So it won't go on the website, recorded?
It will, it's still being recorded.
Yeah, I just, I just give them this.
Oh, gotcha, cool. Okay, approval of the regular agenda. Move to approve the agenda for June 21st, 2023.
Second?
And second, any objection or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda will be approved. Disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I don't, it's not really a conflict by the definition, but I feel like I'm, I should recuse myself from voting on the land disposal map because I do plan on putting in a letter of interest from all the lots. So I think I'll just, I don't know.
I would disagree with that because I might too, who knows?
I don't consider that a conflict.
Yeah. Yeah, almost anybody can, right?
Anybody could, we'll... For a land disposal process, an RFP, anybody could put in for an RFP, so.
Right, when it gets time to vote on an item that you did put in for, that would be different.
Yeah.
So our rule, no conflict on that. Any other conflicts or ex parte? Hearing none, then we'll move on to communications, bioimpetition visitors. We have guest speakers tonight, Kristin Carpenter from Prince William Sound Economic Development, and Rebecca Rom?
Rebecca is not able to...
Rebecca's not going to be able to make it.
Okay, so Kristin, go ahead.
Put on my Economic Development District hat, yes. And so we've talked about this project before, I think. We came to the idea of looking at the feasibility of a ferry authority for Prince William Sound because of declining service, declining support from the state. And also, I think the state had done some looking into the possibility of a public corporation for the entire system. So they, they did a study under Governor Walker, they did another study under Governor Dunleavy. And when we did this, we directed the consultants to make full use of that information, not reinvent the wheel. But anyway, so we thought, could we look at the feasibility of a ferry authority just for Prince William Sound? What would that look like? And so this is, we've got the draft final report, which is posted on our website. We should have a final final by the end of the month, by the end of June. But this is kind of, I just wanted to give an overview of what we've done so far and see what questions you all might have. And we've been going around doing this to the other municipal city councils in the region and the tribal entities also. Okay, so we worked with McKinley Research Group. The purpose was to assess the viability of a regional ferry authority, to provide reliable and sustainable ferry service. And as I said, the context was declining state support and increasing service disruptions. So the scope of work, they did a nice framework for us, looked at the analysis of historical traffic, analyzed operating, ferry service operating costs, vessel construction and acquisition, did some pro forma cash flows, and also helped us with public engagement, did some stakeholder interviews, and have been participating in community and tribal meetings. And yeah, so I think you all are pretty familiar with the communities that the ferry in Prince William Sound serves. And you can see the route distances in the table on the right. The Cordova to Whittier leg is 97 nautical miles, which is kind of the big bugaboo in our system just because it puts us a few hours over the 12-hour window that the Coast Guard has for day boat travel. But anyway, that's a nice summary, I think, of the service area. And just looking at population trends over time, just to give us, give you a quick overview of what's happening. Cordova is gaining a little bit, the villages are losing a little bit, and Whittier is actually gaining. And so this is what I mentioned earlier, the route length of time, round trip hours. So Whittier to Cordova, let's see, 15 hours. The Whittier to Valdez route is just a smidge over 12 hours. And there was the thinking that maybe the Coast Guard could potentially offer a waiver for that if we did, depending on what type of service model, if this goes forward. And depending on, like I said, on what type of service model we choose. But anyway, that's a summary of the legs that we're trying to cover for the region. And then this is looking at ferry traffic history over time. And the comment is always made, you know, look at the decline in use. But the point I would really like to make is that between 2011 and 2015, that's when we had fast ferry service. And there was much more frequent service, and so more people used it. So it's a little bit, this graph doesn't fully acknowledge that, is what I'm thinking. So I, and I guess I say that to say, you know, we don't really know if we had more consistent service, if we could plan a year or two years out for the schedule. Ridership might go up from what it's been in the last few years. We don't really know what exactly that would be.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Uh, the fast ferry was 2011 to 2015?
Uh, it was more like 2005 to 2015, I think. Does anybody else remember otherwise?
Did you?
2005, when they first came here.
Yeah.
And did they consider like multi-stop, multi-leg trips? So instead of just like Whittier to Cordova, Whittier to Chigna to Cordova, trips of that?
They would do the whole sound in one day. I think there were, they didn't do it every day, but there were definitely several days a week where they did that.
No, I'm sorry, for the study, this, this assessment of looking at the different ferry routes.
That's a good question. I'm not 100% sure how they, if, how they did. I don't think they did a ton of actually looking at scheduling. I mean, I think there's so many, they, they were trying to look at costs, they're saying there's a lot of things that could affect the cost. But yeah, that's, that would really be part of the puzzle piece going forward. And you'll see, because they were talking about, you know, if we do set up a ferry authority, do we do it with one day boat? Do we try to acquire two day boats so that there's a backup and that could make a difference?
Yeah.
Yeah. So some, his 2018 figures looking at what happens over the 12-month cycle. I think we all guessed that the higher levels are in the summer. And then this is looking at revenue in Prince William Sound for the region and the different legs. And looking at that over time. And again, you can see the higher revenue levels are the teens. 2,000 teens, whatever the right way to say that is. Yeah. So what is a ferry authority? There is an Alaska statute that allows entities to form a port authority, and a ferry authority is a type of port authority. But it's basically a political subdivision that you would form with one or more members, and it protects the member municipalities from liability of the ferry authority or the port authority. That's the rationale behind setting it up. And it would be governed by a board of directors, it's got the power to borrow money and issue bonds, would be eligible for receiving public funds, subject to the Open Meetings Act. And yeah, if there's a, whatever development plan is created, would need to be approved by all the participating municipalities. And I think you, yeah, you have to set up parallel ordinances for each municipality, and then each municipality has to vote on it.
And I just wanted to make one comment is that right now it's only set up for municipal governing bodies. So right now tribes are not allowed to do port authorities. And there's some conversation around getting a change in the legislature to allow that to happen. But right now, the city would be the only eligible entity to participate in a port authority.
And so they were looking at what are the advantages and what are the challenges of doing this project? Potential advantages, it could certainly be more responsive to local needs, could offer operational management autonomy for scheduling and for innovation. Responsibility would be shared by the member municipalities. As I said, they're shielded from liability. And also, these entities would be eligible for public funding. And there is a model in the inter-island ferry authority in Southeast. Their run is a lot shorter, I think it's 31 nautical miles one way. So a third of what, what we have from Cordova to Whittier. And then challenges would be the upfront investment of time, money, and effort to, you know, workload put into getting the legislation and the governing documents in place. And all of that work, municipalities are only eligible, as Helen said, not tribes unless we change the statute.
Do Chigna and Titlic have municipal organizations in each?
Tribal councils.
So those would be, no, so it would really just be the three cities?
Unless we got the legislation changed. I mean, it would, I, I don't know, I'm guessing that the statute was adopted before tribal entities were as powerful and active and developing more capacity as they, as, didn't have as much, have developed a lot more capacity than they, they do now than when the statute was written. I'm, yeah, I'm not sure how old the statute is. The challenge, uncertainty about state and federal aid, you know, yes, we could probably operate something more cost-effectively than what the state does now. But would the state continue to provide that money? Or would the state say, oh, now that you're doing more for less, we're going to give you less? You know, so there's that uncertainty. And we don't want to weaken AMHS. Yeah, so some potential opportunities for innovation, looking at examples. There are some possibilities for partnerships in terms of hauling freight and operational improvements, establishing schedules with more lead time certainly would benefit tourism businesses. And then management improvements, I think in my mind, the biggest thing would be being able to plan for the vessels and the shoreside facilities and making them consistent so that all the vessels we have can tie up at all the docks we have because that keeps changing. And it's, and that's expensive to keep renovating your facilities to do a little out on a little, the termite, you know, a little Frankenstein, it would be better than that. But still, it seems like it's expensive to keep doing those retrofits as vessels change. I think you would have more control over that. And I also think you're not, you're out of that year-to-year budgeting cycle. So you could be setting aside money from year to year, saying like, we know we have to replace this vessel in 15 years. Let's start setting aside that money now.
Would you still be dealing with the multiple unions that they do now?
Possibly. I think if you set up a new entity, there's the possibility for new contracts. You've dealt with unions more, but I think that would be...
We have, like, is that something we could look at IFA for?
Yes. Yeah, that's a good question. I will find out what they're, how they do it.
It should, in theory, be similar.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah. And so they also looked at service models, you know, would you want to do a single day boat? And what are the advantages or disadvantages? So it's lowest cost, but not having, you wouldn't have a backup vessel. A two-day boat fleet would give you more flexibility, allow for the backup, higher operating costs. I think in any scenario, you would, I mean, if we, if, if an entity chose the two-day boat model, you would say, here's our 10-year plan to get there, you know, I don't think that would happen overnight. So whatever route is taken, it's gonna, there'd be a phased approach. And so then this is looking at the service models and their estimated annual operating costs. Yeah, and as you can see with the 24-hour vessel, it's going to be twice as much to operate. But can go beyond the 12-hour day, yeah. And this is a preliminary cost analysis just using the IFA cost categories and looking at kind of how their cost breakdown. And again, their route is 31 nautical miles. They do manage to recover 70 to 75% of their cost through the fare box. Our system's a little bit more complex because of the multiple ports and the longer routes, so. But the model is there. And then this is just a little bit of comparison, you know, to give you an idea of kind of what size vessel and vehicle capacity and passenger capacity. And the Tasli and the Hubbard, you know, that is the new Alaska fast ferry vessel.
Did they look at fast ferries at all in this, or no?
I don't think so. I don't think they looked at fast ferries.
There was like a minor reference to it, and essentially it was cost prohibitive with the daily op, is what the study determined.
Well, I think too, because there's a lot of emphasis on low emissions and renewable energy, is that at all a possibility? And again, for this route distance, it's not great. They said potentially in the future, you could, there's a potential for biodiesel. But that, because of the distance, it and depending on what kind of vessel, if you're trying to turn around, there's probably not enough time to charge on one end to, to get the charge to make the trip back if you're trying to do it the same day. So, yeah. So the, the full report, and there's a ton more detail in the full report, as Casey found out, but it's on our website, and you posted it on the city website too.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So that's, that's the overview. And I'm happy to try to answer any other questions or find out.
Now, if they add crew quarters, would that help bridge the gap to make it? Like, I guess what is the benefit for adding crew quarters if it's still just a day vessel, is that?
You know, I'm not sure they would if it's a day vessel, but...
I know part of the study did mention, or actually the example for the cost of the ferry at $92 or $97 million includes the upgrade at that time, because obviously it's going to be, at the time you build a ferry, that's the time to do whatever you want to it instead of trying to retrofit it. Yeah, they learned that from IFA.
Yes, and the Hubbard.
Right. So I, I'm just curious, because I'm just looking at opportunities right now, our neighbors to South Yak that have zero ferry service on your own. And I'm just curious if there's an opportunity for us to take on this. But in the winter issue, we're only operating for, with the proposed model, only four days out of the week. Is there an opportunity for those other three days to contract the service down to Yak to recoup some of that cost? And I'm sure that community would be more than willing to pay for that when they're looking at the year they're having this year. Just an idea or a thought? Not sure. Great study, thank you.
Yeah, it's really...
Really good information. It's slow, I know, 31 nautical miles, I know the, it's like a four to six-hour ferry trip. It's not a fast way to get anywhere, but it's an op, it's an option. 15 hours to get from Whittier to Cordova is a long, long time.
That was round trip, I think.
I think that's round trip.
Oh, they meant round trip, yeah.
Yeah.
But you were talking about the 12 hours for crew reasons, right? So if you did crew swaps, you could go longer than 12. But that adds
At different costs.
A lot of scheduling.
Right, right. Yeah, so that's why there, yeah.
Which is outlined in the study.
Right. And the study does, I wonder if I just wrong the presentation? There is, I'm just realizing, there is, in the draft report, there is, they did work up like a five-to-10-year path, pathway to getting there if we want to pursue this. And the, one of the first things to do would be to look at what would it take to amend the statute to allow tribes to become members of port authorities? Because they do have access to transportation money, and they could potentially contribute some of those funds to help out. And I can only imagine that Chigna and Titlic would be pleased to get a little bit more ferry service, or at least the security of knowing they could get consistent ferry service, so. But yeah, we're still making the rounds, talking to the, all the communities about this idea. And then I guess we'll be following back up and seeing if people want to proceed or looking into what would it take to, like I said, start with it, looking at the legislation.
Have you been to other communities already? Are we your first community?
We have spoken with Whittier, we've met with the native village of Yak. We're going to meet with Valdez July 5th. And I'm trying to coordinate with Chigna for their annual meeting and artist.
And what, from who you know, what's response, any?
I mean, every community is a little bit different, you know, Whittier, they were very interested. They don't rely on the ferry service as much as we do, but I think they were supportive. I mean, they're certainly a very much a port community.
The commerce, yeah, depends on them.
Yeah, absolutely, right, 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 yeah. So, yeah. I mean, nobody said, oh, heck no, we don't want anything to do with this, you know? The one question they did ask that somebody from Whittier said was, how would this fit in if there were a borough? Like, if there were a borough, would you not need a port authority? And I said, oh, I'm pretty sure you would still want a port authority even if there was a Prince William Sound borough because for the same reason, you'd want to contain the liability to that entity. That was the question that came up.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Put your other hat back on.
Okay, audience comments regarding agenda items. Everybody from the audience want to come up, state your name, address, what agenda item you want to speak to?
Certainly. Cecilia Wees, 400 railroad route, in regard to the land disposal map update, specifically in regard to lots nine and 10, block one, Bodion Park. I respectfully request that I disagree with making the change, leaving it not available rather than available. I wrote the letter in regard to how we had proposed purchasing it, tried to pose, tried to purchase it in the kind of roadblocks we ran into, had it surveyed. And then going back to the planning commission of 2017, when we were submitting our proposal, maybe I understand some of their comments better now because they were hoping the replat could get the contested areas sorted out. Hopefully, the replat would follow existing property lines. The proposal solves so many different issues that they had with the property, and there are more concerns with the property, and one person wondered why it was even available. So we did, we went through trying to purchase it, wishing to preserve the green belt because of the wind protection for our homes, the privacy is wonderful, but also the stability of the soil on the cliff. And we didn't want to develop it, we just wanted to retain that area and have the green belt rez, I guess it would be rezoned, but we had the green belt extend as the other lots to the west of us do on the Chase Avenue side, just to retain that green belt. But it didn't work out, we weren't able to buy it. And, and so I think, my feeling, if, if the lots are changed to available, I really feel the city has to spend the time and the money to figure out what's wrong with the property lines, who owns all the property. I think it's the city's responsibility because we ran into the roadblocks, and I wouldn't wish any other proposed purchaser to do the same. It was discouraging. So I am with them, hoping that it is not changed to available on the land disposal.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you give me those, so I can look at the map, and you want, what lots for those, again?
Um, there were advertised as lots nine and 10.
Nine and 10, yeah.
But, but on my surveys that I have, they're lot eight and nine. We tried to purchase lot eight.
And you tried to do that in 2017?
2017, yeah. There was in the letter I wrote to Albany.
Yeah. Too many letters, too many things.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other audience comments on agenda items? Casey, none, then we are on to chairperson representative of boards of commissions. See, Dr. Sanders is here, he's got some agenda items. Always has a smile.
So, Pana Sanders with CCMC, and I brought Dennis Stavag, our CFO, with us. We gave you a lot of information in this packet. As we got, are kind of moving out and have moved out of the emergency pandemic operations, every year we are supposed to be presenting you with a periodic evaluation. And although we've been doing these periodic evaluations, I haven't brought them to council. We present them to our board, so that's in there for your information. I'm not going to run through the whole thing, we'll be glad to answer any questions on that. Similarly, with our audit, our audit was presented in May to our board. We are giving it to you for information. There's a couple of things I want to point out on our audit that I think are really important. And then Dennis here to answer the audit questions, and you can speak to these things much more eloquently than I can, I'm sure. One of the things in the audit is it appears that we had a positive year financially. But the reason that positive number is showing up is due to the PERS post-employment benefits, had a very good year in their investment account. And so it doesn't, it's not really operational earnings for us, but it does, where we have to put it in our statements, says make it appear that we had a profit. We had a loss last year, just over a million dollars. Part of that is depreciation, we're working really hard, we've improved a lot. But the hospital is absolutely operating on very thin to negative margins. And we are really reliant on everybody utilizing our services. We're working on a lot of quality improvements and improving our revenue cycle. Right now, our year-to-date operations are positive, so. And speaking of the quality improvement, if you didn't see it in the newspaper, we were awarded the bronze level quality award for the, from the American Healthcare Association and National Center for Assisted Living. So we're really proud of that, we're the only hospital in Alaska to have that designation. There's a hospital that has the silver, and we'll be working for the silver, so. So it's a ton of information, and we're open to all questions.
Questions for Dr. Sanders?
Yeah, Tom?
Well, I guess the obvious one is the full-time employees went from 51 to 74. So did we fill in traveler positions, or how did we get to that point?
We filled in a bunch of traveler positions. Some of my predecessors had done things like not filling, we did backfill positions and we cut some really essential positions. So for a long time, when I took over, we didn't have registration clerks. And those are the people that collect any of the billing information, insurance information, and have to do prior ops. So with our patients when they come in. If you don't get that approval from the insurance company when somebody first arrives at the hospital, the insurance company will deny the entire stay, and you don't get any dollars for it. And so we have hired, and it's proving to be a successful method. Critical access hospitals, when we manage them, the way other businesses end up in this kind of death spiral because our human capital is what earns money, right? So if you don't backfill positions, you don't have anybody to help bring in those dollars. If you talk to my staff, they probably still feel like we're short staffed, but we have done a, a good job, I think, filling in more we needed to.
So back to the full-time equivalents. When we were looking at this model in 2018, if we see 51 there, does that exclude like traveling nurse, traveling doctor? So now we've included, as you were saying, some of these registering personnel, but we've also brought in more full-time nursing and doctor staff into our community?
And radiology clerks and lab techs and...
Physical therapy and...
Physical therapy and occupational therapy, so.
Would you say that's still the goal of CCMC, to bring in full-time staff and get away from the model of traveling staff?
It's always our goal.
That's what I need to hear.
Absolutely.
So does utilization look similar in 2018 versus 2022? I mean, it sounds like there's...
Um, it depends on, oh, that, there, if you look on the, I don't know what page it is in the... in the packet, but the hospital indicators from auditors, they break down, and you can see some of the net service per FTE. We have, it's in the audit, no, it's in the periodic evaluation, where we look at utilization over the last three years, and I don't remember the page. Some of it has stayed the same. So, over the last three years, lab use has gone up a lot. Part of that is because COVID and we're testing, right? So, of course, we're using labs more. Radiology services have increased a bit, rehab services and swing bed services, which is a large part of our income, is coming from swing rehab, and that has increased over the last two or three years.
Cool.
Utilization, that isn't, we are still losing a lot of services to, there's the local competition, not everybody's using our lab, and people are sending things that we could be doing here in Cordova to Anchorage, and it's harming us substantially. So, I, I mean, we need all healthcare dollars, if it's something that we're capable of doing here in Cordova, we need everybody to support them.
Is part of that awareness, do people in our community, are they aware that some of these services, and I don't know what they are, that are being outsourced, could be done in-house or in community?
I hope so, and I hope that by us coming and talking to all of you, you can also help communicate that message, and our board helps communicate that message, and we advertise. But it is, we're a very small community, have a hospital, we're lucky to have it, and we need to support it to keep it here.
I know there was a period, I mean, this was a year or two years ago, where we were, I don't know the correct term for it, but we were bringing people in, maybe specifically from Juno, to, for our rehabilitation, longer-term beds that we had available? Are we still doing that? Is that still an option? Are those filled?
Absolutely, and that's part of, if you, and we didn't bring our, well, I guess dinner house up, but if you follow our financial statements right now, you'll see that we've grown our rehab services pretty substantially. Year-to-date, we're operating at a profit, and it's because we're bringing in patients from other communities to do rehab. Getting that bronze quality will help give us another tool to encourage people to come. We've made pamphlets that advertise our rehab, our inpatient rehab, that we're sending out to other communities and their hospitals, and then anytime that we're in those communities, we connect with the hospital leadership and let them know that we're always ready to take their patients. So, kind of everything we can do, we are doing. And then encouraging community members, if they, our loved one gets sent out, that they come back to us for that rehab. We've got a beautiful rehab facility now, and we have some really amazing providers that are working in there, so.
What's our capacity right now? A ballpark?
We have staff to full capacity. We have 10 beds that we could accept people into, all 10 of those beds for rehab.
And we have staff to support that, or no?
So, when we start to push that limit up higher, we can bring in traveler staff to support, so I would say, probably good. And there were times in COVID, you couldn't get travelers, so it's hard to always commit to thinking that we can grow that quick, but we certainly...
And with our current model, how many beds can we support without travel?
Depends on the acuity of the patient, but it varies probably from four to six, pretty safe, in that rehab section, and then we have 10 beds in our long-term care, and then always making sure that we protect our emergency and acute capacity.
Thank you.
That's great.
Dennis here for the hard questions.
Another, it more for the public benefit, the recent work that they're doing, going to board jobs and checking out, and I've had calls and questions, and I read one of them on Facebook, they're taking the whole park. And is, do we have a spot in the city or the hospital, or maybe there is, like, giving little updates, like, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing, we're working towards this? Or could that be done? I don't want to create a job, but, you know, I mean, the public awareness, as we move forward to maybe NV, or, you know, it's nice to have those little tidbits of information, where people come in and say, well, I don't know anything about it, well, it's been on there for a year, we've talked about it.
I, as all of you know, that I am really supportive of having one entity. I think that the most solvent healthcare for Cordova is going to be a single entity. The hospital is at risk when people compete with us, and when other entities start growing their comp, growing the services that we're already doing, it threatens the hospital. I'm absolutely pro merging into one. But not being the group that is doing that, I don't always have that information either. So, we have all suggested that that should be the path going forward, and I think that as, if we, once we get there, we'll get some more PR and have some regular updates, but I think that you all know as much as I do.
Yeah, I didn't think about that, yeah, we didn't hire those folks. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, there aren't any hard questions.
Good to see you all, anyway.
Thanks for coming.
You came and told us you had, you weren't asking for money, so...
Yes. Awesome, thank you. Bad debt amounts have gone down, so that's...
Okay, who's next on our list? School board is not here, right?
No, I think they're pretty much taken the summer off. He kind of said that last time, didn't he?
Yeah, I think he's actually doing secretarial stuff, and I'm, he's the one that's...
I thought he was shampooing carpets.
Well, that too.
Now he has to figure out how to plug the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, God, don't say it.
So, student council report, any other boards here? I don't think so, no.
At all, no at-alls today.
Okay, consent calendar is before you.
Anybody pulling anything? No. Otherwise, I will take the role on the consent calendar. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Ken Jones?
Yes.
And Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
The consent cal is approved.
Okay, reports of officers, mayor's report. We met with, Helen and I met with the FAA guys today, and apparently there's a concern with at least some of the pilots about a flight service station being back here again, I think that's what it was called, right? Flight service station. Casey probably knows more about this than, than any of us, but, but anyway, they're here to, to gather some current data with the increasing air traffic and private jets coming into town. It's a safety issue that they're looking at, so anyway, they're concerned. So, I think we're going to get, be in contact with some of the pilots and flight organizations and see if they're wanting to push that. Evidently, one of the, one of the pilots was, wrote a letter and was pushing for it pretty hard, so they are considering it. And it sounded to me, and Helen, I think, that they were advocates for it, for bringing back that 24-hour, or at least flight hours times, they, they did talk about maybe just during the day, having an onsite weather observer to do that, so, anyway. There may be, maybe something on that coming forward in the future.
When did that go away, do you know?
I didn't really know either, I think about 10 years ago.
Yeah, because when I went to the place where we had them, that was 12 years ago.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly when it was, but they said it had been sometime...
Speaks to the community that they had out at the airport, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. That's what I turned to about it. So, I told them if they decided they weren't going to bring it back, that maybe they can turn over some of their housing to the community. And, no, they were, they were all over, no, that's used for temporary housing for travelers and such, so they weren't, they weren't going to go there yet. But, anyway, is what it is. I met with the Alieska PR person during, during Newbo, they've got a new president. Anyway, they, they just touched base, you know, they're, they're always wanting to do their PR thing, so, so we just had coffee and chatted about what they were up to and what, what the city was up to, so. And, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot else to, to talk about. Of course, you saw Molina's, we just approved Molina's resignation, so we'll need to appoint somebody to that. Hopefully, we'll get some, some interest in that. Got any yet?
I had one phone call, I have, I have no letters.
So, we got a couple weeks to, to recruit. If you know anybody that's, would be good to serve, they, they're only committing to, between now and, and March, so it's a, a good chance to try it out for somebody that wants to, wants to see if, if they're, if fit to council, so.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Yeah.
And maybe mayor, the appropriate, talk to, you know, I don't know if the, like, folks on planning zoning, I don't know if they realize, like, oh, I could step up, and that might be worth mentioning to them.
Sure.
I like that when we bring, as they work their way up to kind of into the system.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I just, a thought occurred to me, it might be somebody not realizing that they could actually do that, or being ZC, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's happened for many, many people that have done that.
Yeah, it's a good way to do it.
Mission first. Kevin's here, he'll, he'll throw that out.
He doesn't want to lose...
Yeah, exactly, that's what he said.
You're not wrong, but please don't take my people.
Right.
They can, they can do both.
They can do both, we've had to do both before. Actually, yeah. So, anyway, any questions? I mean, I don't think there's anything other else that's critical. Okay, city manager's report, Helen.
Okay, probably most of you saw in the newspaper that the governor vetoed a portion of the budget that was approved by the legislature, which included a cut to the base student allocation by half. The Senate has enough votes to override, but the House is still working, we'll see where that goes, but nonetheless, we don't have to worry about it until we start putting our operating budget together for '24. But I just wanted to give you a heads up, that that's, that's an issue that will no doubt come before us in the not-too-distant future.
It will, it will reduce the maximum contribution that we have to pay as well as, it not only cuts the schools' budget, but it reduces...
It changes the entire formula.
Changes, yeah, what, what we would have as a maximum.
Next week, we start union negotiations. The process is a bit of a dance. In the beginning, we put forward changes that we know we want to make, they put forward changes that they want to make, and towards the end is when we actually start talking around monetary pieces, so it's just little things like, you know, who gets a 15-minute bathroom break and who gets a five-minute bathroom break, I mean, I'm being a little facetious there, but that, it's that kind of basic stuff, so council will be brought into the process as we get closer and have a better feel on the economic package, and we will present in executive session opportunities that hopefully will get us to yes with the union, and will allow you guys to really give us feedback on what our, our end numbers are going to be, and what we're going to look like, and how hard we're going to push certain things, so. That will come a little later, guessing towards the end of July into early August. We have a September 1 commitment, is when we will have a, an agreed-upon contract that we'll bring to council, hopefully the first meeting in September for ratification, so. But you guys will be involved in that process as we get closer to monetary pieces. We've started the transition of financial systems to NetSuite, we're having regular meetings, we're gathering data, and we're starting that transition, it's very exciting, we're really looking forward to having a robust system that will give you guys the duty you need to make your decisions. And then finally, Tony, do you want to talk about harbor relocation?
Not really.
Not really.
We did, we had a process, come on up, come on, come on.
He thought he was serious.
It was rhetorical, Tony, yeah, I noticed.
I was just going to say, we established a process, and Tony and company implemented, I'm going to let him describe where we're at.
So, we took all the boats and figured out, the living boards are residential, so we had to accommodate them, because that is their resident. So, we had to put them over there, and then we looked at the boats that we couldn't haul, like, wood boat can't stay out that long, and then we took a group of boats, which are commercial, we lumped them all in as commercial, whether you're a fishing boat, serves, didn't, didn't matter, it just was one big lump of, and we filled, I think, we had eight leftover stalls, and we held a lottery, random generated on the computer, done, put in us, from one to whatever that number is, and then picked those, whatever number came up was the winner. So, we did that, and then we took all the other boats, and those are going to the shipyard, which is like 50, right, right around 50 boats, those all go to the shipyards, so we cleared that list, that is our hope, so. And then we're also going to pick a, we picked three extra for the North Harbor in case plans change, because someone's plan will change, they'll decide to go south or do something else with their boat, and then we're also going to pick a few extra for down shipyard too.
Some of you may have heard, I was just going to add to that, some of you may have heard from people who didn't get selected for anything, who did not submit the paperwork, and so Tony is establishing a waitlist, which will accommodate those vessels and will give them slots as they become available.
So, how many of those do we anticipate that don't have a, a spot now, either in harbor or on the, on the deck?
I don't anticipate many, but they're usually smaller boats, mostly trailerable. And like I said, it is going to change, calling people now for the shipyard side of things to find out if they're even going to stick with that. And then we had a couple doubles that kind of, what's that?
So, we're looking at a handful?
I think probably a handful of boats that would be like travel lift size or something that couldn't pull, so.
And, and the only other thing is that we've also been looking to establish opportunities if, for some reason, we can accommodate vessels in Cordova. So, I spoke to the city manager of Valdez, and through resolution, the council can establish a specific rate fee for our vessels just for this transition period, and, and they're amenable to that if there's demand for it, they'll go through the process. And I know you've, you spoke to Valdez...
Yeah, I spoke to all the harbors in Prince William Sound, and even spoke to Codyak. Valdez is probably surprisingly the one that has the most big stalls available for, like, saner size or anything like that.
And then the one other piece that has been of concern is the Alieska served as vessels, I want to speak to that, too.
Well, I guess they're just concerned because they don't, their vessels are not going to be in the water, and they're required to have so many vessels, tier one and tier two, ready to go in, for multiple different hours, six hours and 24 hours, somewhere in that range. So, I know Friday, Colin and I are meeting with serves again to talk with them. We cannot accommodate, unfortunately, all the serves, but some from the lottery got picked, I think two or three of them, they will be still in water, but there are others that either have to go to the shipyard, which there's no guarantee we can get them in a wa, in that timeframe back in the water, because we're just going to stack that place, you know, with boats. We're going to have almost double the capacity we usually have, so. So, it is a concern, and they're working through it, I know Alieska's talked to Valdez also, and they're trying to work that through and see how they're going to handle that.
So, I just want to commend everybody on the harbor team, because they're working really hard to try to find solutions to a really complicated puzzle. There's not enough slips in the water to accommodate all the boats that want to be in the harbor, as he mentioned, only eight got, got placed, and there's another 50, 60 boats that are going to be on the harbor, so, so we are looking for other alternatives.
If we have another basin, we'd be okay.
Yeah. So, so it's, it's still a puzzle, and they're working on it hard. The goal is to get everyone an answer before they leave for Saney on June 1st, so we're, we're really working fast and hard to try to identify whatever bank's up to.
So, Ann Schaefer had her hand up first.
I've heard some concern and confusion also about, like, the fees that, for, for payment throughout the winter when people aren't in the harbor.
Mm-hmm.
So, just for my own information...
If we're not giving them any place, we're going to cut them a deal on their, their mortgage. If we're telling them, you have to go to Valdez or wherever, then we'll work with them on whether it's, you know, they don't pay one for anything after a monthly rate or whatever you figure out, but, yeah, we're not going to charge them for a whole But, yeah, we're not going to charge them for a whole year if we're kicking them out of Cordova, tell them to go away, which we don't want to do that with anyone.
I, I think the goal has always been that whatever fee is charged will not be more than what they are charged to be in the harbor. The other thing is, is that we're waiving all the lift fees in and out, so no one will have to pay a lift fee to be on the harbor, and then pay a lift fee back into the water. So, again, their yearly stall fee will cover, cover the, the costs of being on the harbor, and we will provide that service so that there's no additional expense.
But they're still paying their yearly stall fee, even though they're out of the water.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, storage and lift would be great.
Because, because we do charge storage fees for being on the harbor, so.
Right, yeah, whether you're going to stall them out, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, again, the, the goal is it's, you will not pay more. And, and for those that are displaced, we'll prorate the fees so that, that the money that they save can be used again, hopefully won't cost any more to be in Valdez or other places. So, anyway, we're being really cognizant of that. We have worked with our attorneys on that, because pretty much right off the get-go, we had people who challenged us on those kinds of things, why are tier one vessels getting selected before other vessels? They had a legitimate point, we can't do that. Others were like, I live on my houseboat, you're displacing me, we can't displace people from their primary residences. So, there were a lot of legal considerations that went into the decisions that were made about how to proceed, so, and that includes, you can't charge for things that, a service that you're not getting, so we'll make sure that those are, and the reason it's confusing is we're still trying to figure out the solutions and the cost structures for that, so. But it will be, it'll be finalized soon.
Jones, Baylor, and Kinsman?
So, I was just curious, the North Harbor survey that went out, did you get very many responses off that? Was there people who willingly gave up their stall to get a haul out? Was there any sort of incentive offered for that?
There wasn't. I mean, we, I talked to quite a few people over there. We got a lot of responses back, but the, most of them are, I still want to go deer hunting, I still want to go whatever, and there's a lot of serves vessels over there, too. That, that's where most of the serves vessels are, is over on that side, so.
And, and I think the other thing is the size of the slips are, the concern is a lot of gillknitters on this side, and there really wasn't a benefit to trying to place a saner in some of those smaller slips.
Yeah, we're still working on a plan over on the north side about, maybe, trying to make more room, so.
Okay, I was just curious if, if the effort had been made to, I mean, I, I can think of at least three or four saner-sized vessels that, you know, the, like, for instance, the Sea Hunter, that doesn't live here, is on serves, sits in the harbor year-round, doesn't ever move, why can't it be hauled out? You know? Has there been an outreach to him to offer, hey, we'll give you a free haul out if you move your boat? You know, that opens up another saner stall for.
He was a responsive, I want to be in the water, but, yeah.
Okay.
Come from Baylor, serves?
Yeah, I guess on the, on the serves boats, I don't know how many there is, but educating seems like a rather simple process to put those boats at the head of the line where they can easily grab and put in the water. You say we're going to be stacking them in, we won't be able to get them, but why wouldn't they be in a position to where you go, you go, you go? You know what I mean? Head of the line, so to speak.
Well, it all depends on when they come out.
Well, I mean, yeah, but that'll have to be coordinated, but.
And then just trying to get in there and get them. I mean, you're not going to get them no matter where you put them in, that time and manner. If they want six hours, there's no way we can put thirty, forty boats in, you know, we can only do them at the high, or close to high tide, somewhere in that area. But, yeah, we're, we're looking at trying to place boats in a little different, but there's just so many of them that trying to get them all in a place where you can get to them, because you can stack them, and then stack next to them, and kind of, yeah.
And, and right now, you want to tell them, right now, you're able to hold two boats?
If the tides are good and the boats are the right draft, we can do two to three. We have been doing two to three regularly, and it's a lot. It's a lot of overtime the guys are getting, they're working all day long, and then they're coming in until 11 o'clock at night, we've done them in four in the morning. I don't know why, it's different than most years, maybe because everyone's been fishing, because we've had a bunch of openers, no one's had time to work on their boats, but, yeah, we've been really backed up, like, we're, the next two weeks is all blocked out right now with boats. Man them two a day, so, and working weekends. Yeah, so, yeah, it's like everyone waited till the last minute, but I think, because they were all fishing, because we had openers this year.
And we've had bad weather, so.
Yeah, yeah, that too, yeah.
I, I, I'm sure you can imagine the complexity of what they're trying to do, and they are literally looking under every rock and behind every boat to try to find space to put things, but I think the process so far has been, our, our goal is to be fair, equitable, transparent, and, and make sure everyone has equal opportunity. And there were some folks that just didn't read the two letters and, that we sent out, and see all the posters posted around, so there will be some rubbles, and just have them contact Tony.
They have been, I know they've been contacting Helen, too.
They've been contacting me, yeah.
But I, I called all the harbors around that I could think of that have done harbor renovations, and no one has done a project like this. They either had five other harbors to put boats in, or they did a phase, or they just did a little piece. And, you know, phasing just didn't work for us, it's just money-wise, so.
Mr. Kinsman?
Yeah, just, just for my information, there's some risk potentially, I mean, removing 50 to 60 vessels out, where does some of that liability for damage fall? Does that fall on the city, and actual removing of vessels from the water to the land?
If it's some negligent that we did wrong, then yes.
So, something is damaged in the process. I just, I'm hearing you say, we have a lot of people on overtime, we have, I mean, that just drives, there's inherent risk associated with that, moving more vessels than we're used to?
Yeah, in a short period it will be, but it won't be too many more probably than our normal year. I mean, we've had a high of 170-something.
Any year, when you're saying that now, annually?
Yeah.
So, but, again, short period of time, because we're going to have a short window, and there's, I imagine your staff is going to be on whatever your equivalent of overtime, double times, whatever it is, but beside the, even the, my piece, fatigue piece, and just, I, I hope that you're kind of preaching that some of that liability is on us as a city if there's damage, which is, and even in, in, in inherent.
Mm-hmm, right. No, I agree, yeah. You know, we're lucky right now, this is, we've never had two full-time operators with travel. So, we can split it up a little bit. I can jump in if I have to, I've been an operator before. So, if we get to the point of, all right, oh, my guys, you need a break, let me know.
And we have that new piece of equipment.
The trailer is supposed to be in Seattle right now, so.
Okay.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
Jones?
I guess one more thing, kind of to build on Councilmember Kinsman's comments with the liability. I, I know it's a requirement when, when you fill out your haul-out contract that you have to write down your insurance information, but I've also heard from some members of the public who have had, you know, a boat hit them, out on the grounds last year, and they were parked in a harbor and weren't insured. You know, I've heard a lot of grumblings about that, because you're, you know, I know I had to fill out my insurance information when I got my stall, so is there any way, when we're stacking these boats in the shipyard very close together, I mean, there's, every few years, it seems like there's a boat fire at Homer, and then in the shipyard, and it transfers from one boat to another, and it's, you know, is there any way we can ensure that these boats that are being hauled out will have a certificate of insurance on file or something like that?
Yeah, our new contract will require the insurance company to alert us if they, the insurance lapses or is somehow dropped. So, whereas before, we would just get, yeah, I've got insurance, here's the proof, but we wouldn't see the next month's transaction, which was cancel my insurance, don't have any. So, we have, we have that.
Yeah, we had, we had lawyers, they did, took, and gave us a whole new mortgage agreement and everything, so next month, beginning of next month, we're going to send out all of them to everyone to get that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll be a rider on it, so we'll get the call or an email saying, hey, they canceled their insurance today.
Okay, so we, we, yeah, in the past, I just wrote down, oh, this is new's number, here's, here's my agent's number, but will I have to actually bring you a certificate of insurance from now on when I sign up?
Yeah, so, and then, like I said, that, that company will contact us, send me an email or whatever, and say, hey, Mr. Jones, he canceled his insurance today, he doesn't have insurance, you know?
And then what?
Well, then you can get him out, tell him to leave. And we have the legal way to do that, so.
Any questions, Kinsman?
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's a thought, too, that, that many boats stacked, that's a lot of electronics, a lot of things that we, you've thought about security, as far as stepping up police enforcement or watching, or there's got to be some issues that you're thinking about.
Yeah, we just actually got, two cameras were down there, we dug the trench, and we're going to, probably in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have, the company's for Kaida, and they have a camera system, and we're going to have them down there. We got two of them right now, I think the best place we can get them right now, it's going to be tough with that many boats to see everything, but yes, I was going to talk to the, the chief and talk about maybe a few more patrols down there during the night and stuff, so, yeah.
Jones?
One, one more suggestion or comment on that front is, you know, they make pretty inexpensive game cameras that, you know, maybe your two cameras don't see everything because everybody's blocking it, you can just throw up a couple of those cameras and hide them in a spot, and, you know, they have a chip, but.
Right, yeah.
Might catch something.
They do make some of the cellphones, so.
Yep, they do.
Is there Wi-Fi down there?
Um, not, the CDC's Wi-Fi doesn't work down there.
Doesn't work well.
They, they do have, there's data.
I'm just saying, if there was Wi-Fi, then you could have the personal stuff, you know, the, and those kind of things, individual boats could also take.
As long as you can plug in the power, you know, it's not everybody's going to be able to plug in the power.
Right, there won't be much power down there at all.
We got battery ones.
Yeah.
I don't have to charge my thing for once a, once a month.
That's just a thought.
I'm going to put my game.
And so set it off.
Because they're battery-operated.
I got a squirrel.
You got a squirrel?
I got a squirrel now.
Cool. Any other questions for Tony on the harbor plan?
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Make the cruise ship passengers tomorrow at 7:00.
All right.
See you all down there.
Seven AM?
So, I, I have an additional.
Okay.
Any questions for Helen?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not, so, because Dr. Sanders was here talking a little bit about the hospital, and we've talked, we've heard a little bit about NBE looking, well, doing exploration or drilling in the parking lot, and I'm just wondering how that, if you know, or what we, I don't think we can close it, Katrina. Can we close the door?
Not really.
We can't close it completely, Katrina. You can just leave it cracked, you don't have to open it all the way, but.
Oh, my goodness.
We're trapped!
Maybe I'll just leave it.
You don't have to leave it all the way.
I'm just wondering if there's, I mean, the parking lot is city property, right? And I'm just wondering what kind of, if you know about what the planning process is, looking at alternative locations, or looking, are they looking at a range of sites, or?
They're looking at a range of sites. Their current thinking is that if they were to buy the hospital, they want to build a new clinic in close proximity, and they looked at the, the coverage around the hospital, and that seems the most, the best fit for what they're planning. There was some talk about putting it in the back, down low, there was concerns about that, so they're looking there. Again, to have a single campus, the risk, there, there still is a lot of uncertainty around whether they're going to buy the hospital and pick, pick up that portion of the health care services, or build a standalone clinic. And I think you heard Dr. Sanders allude to the fact that we don't have the ability to have a, two competing entities in town, and the clinic, Alanka Clinic, given it has IHS money, will have a, an advantage. And they're able to fully, they'll, they'll have a brand-new facility, they'll have lab, they'll have x-ray, they'll have, have a lot of the stuff that are money, yeah, and dental money makers for, maybe not money makers, but sustainers for the hospital. So, she's really getting very concerned about that, and, and is hopeful that if the site, if they decided to get, go to the hospital, and the best site was in close proximity where they're doing the boreholes and all that stuff now, that city council would say, yes, we're willing to give up a portion of the park, College Center's Park, or whatever, it'll be controversial, no doubt, but hopefully the benefits will be worth the exchange. But we're a long way from there, because I haven't heard a peep since they presented to me about three months ago, and I keep in regular contact with them, so they're still trying to figure out what they're doing.
Okay. Are they on for July 5th? They are coming?
So far, yes.
And then, I think Dr. Sanders was also alluding to, what could we do to encourage folks to use the, the lab facility more? I mean, was that?
Whatever, whatever portion, you know?
Yeah.
Instead of going to Alanka when you have a, the sniffles or a cut, go to the clinic, you know? I mean, that would be your preference, but I'm sure Alanka would feel just the opposite, so.
But is it a matter of also, I mean, I, I wasn't sure if she was also saying, are there services that Alanka contracts out or sends to Anchorage that they could?
So, if you go to Alanka right now and need lab work, they sell us to Anchorage, rather than using the lab at CCMC, so, and.
So, what can we do to say, if you really want to be partners, how can we?
All branch.
Right, how can we?
We, we've chatted with them about that, and it's, it's, it's a struggle.
Okay.
And I think as, as an entity, NBE is struggling as well, as an organization trying to decide, you know, what is in the best interest of our tribal members?
Right.
And how do we fit within the community? That, that conversation is not settled yet.
Okay, I mean, if it's a matter of inviting them to a joint workshop where we say, you know, this is a concern, we'd really like to.
Yeah.
Talk about it council to council, is this, anyway, I, I don't know what the options might be.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is, let's wait and hear from Ted, he's going to be bringing a team here, is my understanding, at our next council meeting, and you'll have the opportunity, and I think you guys could invite that, and, and just see what.
At that point, okay.
What he thinks. I know there's, there's a lot of.
Plugs.
A lot of things going on.
Yeah.
They've got some big projects.
Yeah.
Okay, Tony?
Thank you.
I mean, some of those were in the conversation, but I think, yeah, all of, like, let's, what is happening is a ways down the road. We still have to coexist in our community, and we need hospitals, so, even things, when I look at what they contract out for, like dietitian, I know Alanka has a dietitian as that, you know, person who should be asked to them here, but that might be an opportunity to have that conversation as just a, a big step moving forward.
Well, and, and part of the issues that they have IHS money to do certain things, and they're required to do certain things, and, and the drivers are different than just the normal thing, so, you know, it'll be good information for you all to hear when Ted comes, and I, I believe there'll be some other folks who are part of the hospital, the clinic team.
Okay, thank you.
Community's too small to have those kind of redevelopments, and, and, and mental health, and, and, so. Okay, thank you.
Come from Baylor?
Yeah, I guess, I, like I said last, means worth repeating now because of the question about the boreholes and the clinic site, but that was presented to city council a number of years ago, even had a drawing, and this was what they were, and council said, yeah, we could probably support that, we could even portion off a section of that land and sell it to you. So, that was just the beginning of this process, and now they're following to it, and we haven't sold anything, it's still our land, go through that public process, but this is not new, this has been in the works for quite a while, it's the first that we've seen activity, but they did present drawings, and that was their expectation, there wasn't plenty. That's different than all the other issues, but that particular one has been on the table for a while.
And I just want to add to that, we also benefit, they have agreed to share the results of the, the ground stability, standing, whatever it is, so.
The molotovs and the.
Yeah, exactly. So, no matter what happens, we'll have access to that data if you need it or wanted to do something in the future, so it's a, it's a cost we won't have to incur.
Questions for Jones? Hearing none? Kirk's word?
I have a written report in there, and then, like you guys asked, I gave you the attendance report, which maybe was a little confusing, because the, the agenda item that we have coming up is about attendance, too, so obviously that might be something you want to refer back to for that agenda item. And then I'll start including that quarterly, um, and that is all, I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Kirk? Thank you. We don't have correspondence, ordinance is a resolution, resolution oh six two three two four, a resolution of the council of the city of Port Oak, Alaska, adopting the twenty twenty-three land disposal maps. So move.
Second.
Move consecutive. Could I ask?
I, I was just gonna say, I have, Kevin is here, um, who is able to answer any questions you might have, so I, I.
That was my question to you?
And for me, could you adjust, address the lots that were spoke to on Chase Avenue as far as what's going on, potential issues? Or is, is your thoughts that those are viable building lots or what, what's the thought process?
Alright, yeah, so, Steve. Yeah, so after having some conversations with, uh, the neighbors there, specifically Bruce Campbell and the Wieses, um, you know, did get some valuable historical information from them. But at the same time, also, if you do look at, um, I guess, item B from the Wies letter of interest, that survey that was done when they did their request to, uh, purchase the property does show the edge of the cliff. And so while I understand that the cliff itself may be vulnerable to, uh, potential activity, um, I was told by Mr. Campbell that, I believe he said in two thousand and eleven, there was some sloughing that happened. Um, and that was more on the lot that's identified as lot, sorry, I scribbled on this, I believe lot eight. If you look at the dashed line on the other lot that has the purple on it.
Well, it's the letter that.
It's the letter, the letter from the Wieses, it's not in your packet as the separate item. That shows the edge, the top of the bank. And so, you know, without knowing exactly where the bottom of the bank is, but just based on visually going out there, you know, it's a pretty vertical cliff. So, you know, the bottom of the bank, I would say probably is not too far off from where the top of the bank is. And doing some measurements with some of our electronic, uh, mapping programs that we have, you know, there, there is, there is potential, it would need to be investigated. But I, I could see a potential for possibly getting, you know, a building site out of these two lots. Um, they would access from Chase Avenue directly across from the, uh, hospital and park entrance that's shown there, uh, right below the, or right above where it says La Fever Street. Not sure why it says that, obviously, because that's Chase Avenue. But again, uh, and, you know, uh, there is, uh, there is a easement up on that cliff and there's a wa, I believe it's a water line and things like that. So obviously that upper area couldn't be disturbed and should be preserved. But, you know, while, you know, we don't have to necessarily make these available, this may be a more difficult lot to develop. Um, you know, I do think that there is potential for something that is, you know, it'd have to be butted up close to Chase Avenue, but without actually having to disturb the hillside. Again, if someone wanted to investigate that, I don't know if we should necessarily deter people from looking into that. But at the same time, I do definitely understand their concerns about actually disturbing the hillside itself.
And I, and I think my questions are more for the folks that have property and their concerns, so that leads to my next question. So if somebody were to come in and apply for these lots, there's a lot that's gonna be a lot, lot, lot. There's more things that are gonna be looked at, even to, to get to that point. You're not gonna sell these unless they are buildable lots, I'm assuming, and there's gonna be a lot of those issues looked at and
Yeah.
At that time may make a determination that they're really not buildable.
Yeah, definitely, I agree with that, and like they said during, uh, uh, sorry, uh, like was said during public comment, you know, there was issues with land ownership. From my understanding, looking back at it, it is more of those, it's hard to tell, but, you know, where their building's in, you can see there's little triangle fragments. And those are little remnants that are where the ODIAC subdivision and then the USS eight-two-eight kind of come together. And so that is what really held up the previous land disposal process because they wanted to do a re-subdivision of those lots to actually buy the lots below and then connect them to their lots. But you can't connect them if you can't actually show that there's clean title of those triangle pieces.
That's on page seventy-three, you can see the little triangles.
And so, you know, I, when I originally brought this to you, I, I knew a little bit about that background. And so that's why in the land disposal maps that I showed you as the proposed for twenty twenty-three shows to not even touch those, not even, you know, get involved with those and just look at the actual ODIAC park subdivision lots themselves. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then just, maybe one more, and then, again, this is more for the public consumption and, so, these may be available, um, they may or may not be buildable. So that doesn't mean that adjoining property owners couldn't buy these lots for their green built, if, that would be determination, of course, from plan and zoning commission, not to us, but that doesn't rule out, or does it?
No, I, I'd actually say that that's very much a council decision.
Well, yes, I understand.
If they, I, you know, someone wants to come and request any of these lots, whether it's these lots or others, and they come and say, I just wanna buy these so that no one develops next to me. The council will need to make a decision, is that in the best interest of the community for someone to hold that land as opposed to develop that land?
Right, yeah, well, the door's open.
Yeah, 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 anybody can put in for it.
Right, I guess that's what I wanted to let people know, thank you. That's all I had.
And I'll just state it for the record one more time, it's all for sale for the right price. It doesn't matter if it's marked as available or not, in my opinion, it's all for sale. Any other comments on the resolution, let's go down the list, Councilmember Baylor, you have anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, my comment really was that I, I understand the concerns of the, that the letter writers put in, um, but even if the lots are listed as not available, anyone can submit a letter of interest for any lot, even those that are listed as not available.
The battle begins.
So, I mean, that's like the, the interesting tension about our definitions for land availability. So, yeah, that's where I kinda fall down on those properties, so, I don't know, that's just one of the big problems with land maps.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think having more land available when you have a housing issue, I mean, so, from my information and maybe public's information, when it comes to these specific lots, does the burden fall on city, does it fall on private owners to determine if they are actually buildable lots?
Well, so, I mean, we don't have a definition of a buildable lot. If you have four thousand square feet, we have to let you develop that lot. If we tell you that you cannot develop that lot, if you have a legal lot, even right now, if you have a lot that's less than four thousand square feet, but it was legally subdivided, we can't tell you you can't build on that lot because that then becomes a taking, because the government has now told you that you are not allowed to use your property. Um, so, the definition of buildable lot, I, like I said, we don't have one in code. It basically is, do you have a legal lot or do you not?
So to, so if someone submits letter of interest in these lots, what is the process then moving forward to determine before they're sold and then we have to let them build on it? Is, I mean, what's that process look like?
We'd have to go, we'd have to do the, uh, we'd have to go through a title, uh, title process to make sure that, uh, to ensure that we actually do have clear title on it. And that was what was one of the hangups back in the twenty seventeen process was that they weren't asking just for these lower lots, they were also trying to get those fragments. And that there, there is very unclear title on those fragments. Um, so first we would have to go through the title process, ensure that the city does actually have true and clear title to those lots down below. And then as long as those are free and clear and the lot is at least four thousand square feet, then we can sell it as a buildable lot.
And so to get to that point, we're gonna leave them the way they are until someone submits a letter of interest. At that point, then we'll do some more investigative work on who owns it.
The way the, the way the code is written is the city owns property.
Sure.
We're not out there, you know, forcing anyone to buy it or anything like that. If you're interested in it, it is financially up to you to do all the work to figure out, is this a lot that I can really buy? And is this a lot that is worth building on? Because the code says that, you know, because we don't have to sell the property, if you wanna buy it, that's all on you. The taxpayers as a whole should not be subsidizing the research behind whether a lot should be sold or not.
And if it's determined that those lots and we don't have clear ownership and a private person went and spent all this money to do that, that's, are we not opening ourselves up to the city for a liability saying that we've published this as this lot's for sale?
We didn't make you come and ask to buy it.
Okay.
I wanna just add one thing to the conversation, which is that, um, there are many people in this community that wanna use lots for different things. And that's the other pieces that council at some point will need, need to make a decision on whether if someone wants to put up a boat storage yard on a lot zone. To do that, is that what council thinks is in the best interest of the city? So those are the difficult decisions that you guys get to tackle with us. If there's letters of interest that come in for something, you have to weigh that against what the city's needs are right now because we do have a limited amount of land. And you need to decide the best use of that land, given the needs of the community. So, that argument, that discussion will come to council, yeah.
Thank you for the guidance on that.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, in terms of, so say we make it available and somebody could put in a, a proposal to buy it for a certain amount. I mean, I think the city is obligated to sell it for fair market value?
Yeah, um.
But then in terms of deciding what is that value, if some of it is cliffy or it's?
Our code does allow for pretty wide flexibility on deciding what fair market value is. There has to be a method behind it.
Rational, yeah.
But, yeah, what that method and what that rationale is, is pretty wide open to what the council wants to decide what fair market value is. Uh, based on my time here and what I've seen previous is, we typically just do an appraisal and we go what the appraised value is. That doesn't mean that you can't then yourself as the council adopt and say, okay, well, we're gonna take this appraisal and maybe we don't agree with these factors of it, so we'll adjust it in these ways. You just have to have methodology behind that.
Yeah, I mean, they could come in and, somebody could come in and offer less just because?
They, they could, but to accept that, you would then have to justify it.
Right, yeah, okay.
Senator Johnson?
Well, I'm all about building housing, um, I do, I guess, I, I, I share the concerns of the adjacent property owners here. And I should, I can feel their pain a little bit on the city processes, uh, especially when it comes to the ownership of those slivers that their houses have been on for a hundred years and, uh, some of the oldest houses in town, actually, so I, um, yeah, I, I would feel more comfortable having the city do a little more looking into the ownership on those slivers before we move these forward as available or not. And potentially subdividing them to alleviate the cliff issue and then selling the, just the lower portions, um, and have the city do that before we put them as available.
And that's definitely something that could be done, you know, obviously, um, the council would need to direct that, we need to allocate money for that. And then we could, we could potentially recoup that in the future as long as we track that property or properly. And then when it is sold in the future, just that could be made aware that, um, you'll be buying this property for this amount and then there will be this additional cost for previous work that was done to prepare it for sale. So that is a potential, that could be done, uh, again, that would just be, you know, where do we wanna spend our money, when and how?
Okay, so the motion on the table is to
Mr. Mayor?
Adopt these, yes, go ahead.
I would like to offer an amendment to the motion, um, so the motion is I move to approve resolution zero six two three two four, adopting the twenty twenty-three land disposal maps. And I would add, with the exception of ODIAC park lots eight, or, um, I guess it's nine, eight?
Yeah, for clarity on that, so I went off of plat seventy-four dash two seven two, which does identify them as lots eight and nine.
Okay.
If there's a plat that identifies them differently, I can definitely look into that, but, uh, my numbers just came from that plat.
Uh, was it seventy-two?
Seventy-four dash two seven two, eight, and then lots eight and nine.
Okay, can I say what he said?
Yes.
That would be.
Second. Move consecutive to, uh, accept these two lots.
Right, right, to exclude them from adopting the land disposal maps, yeah.
Okay, uh, discussion on the amendment.
Wait, what do you mean exclude them? Do you mean make them unavailable?
Yes.
Leave them as they are currently.
Okay, okay.
Passing the maps with the exception of lots eight and nine of plat seventy-four dash two seven two.
So they will stay what they currently are, which is available.
Got it.
And that's correct, there's current, I mean, I was looking, they're currently unavailable, that's.
Yes, yes, correct.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I support the amendment, um, just because of the, the issues with those slivers and then the cliff. And, um, I would like to see, you know, maybe some information brought forward this fall or something about what the cost would be if, if we were to go through that process. I'm not opposed to selling these lots and I, I think maybe there is, you know, some decent land on the Chase Avenue side that somebody could build a cabin or a half a smaller house. And, you know, we do need more dwellings, so I, I can see the staff's point of, hey, we should make these available, but I'd like to get some of the issues out of the way so that way a potential buyer doesn't have all those alligators that they have to uncover. So that's why I support it.
Councilmember Baylor? Yeah, I guess I'll support it with the, I think you've got a full understanding of our concerns and I guess I would add one more, I mean, you could, I think, I don't know what the setback is from Chase Avenue.
Uh, ten feet off of the front.
Ten feet off, something, uh, I think you could look at it and give us some degree of assertion that if somebody wanted to, you sell a lot, somebody goes in there and starts excavating out of that hillside and that thing goes and they walk away and, and we're lost, so, some, some direction and thought on that and, you know, as far as, like you said, if once we sell it, can we, we have fill permits. I don't know if we have, what would you call that money, no, you know what I mean?
I mean, we don't have any specific clearing or grading code.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah, so maybe, I don't know how we address that, but that'd be another one, like, sort of, somebody starts something, creates a mess and walks away.
Yep, yep.
And then that really harms.
Oh, that's never happened.
So for that reason, I, I will support it. Any other comments on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Both? Motion carries, came back to main motion as amended, any further discussion on that?
I would just like to, I guess, comment that I really appreciate staff's diligence in going around town and thinking outside the box and trying to find land that can be developed because we have such a short supply of it. I just, I really appreciate the effort and it's not lost on me and I wanna put that out there, so I will be voting to support.
Yeah, and I wanna second that, I hope, hopefully you're not discouraged by this one little setback with this one property, because really, same, echo that. Thank you for thinking outside the box and making more land available, because that is what we need and, uh, I, I hope what's, I saw some of the reports on, up on Ski Hill, some of those lots. I hope we can be, if someone truly wants to come in and develop that as a subdivision, we can really help think outside of the box. Because there are some prime lots there, it is just, I, I can't even comprehend how we have lots available in the middle room. But anyways, hopefully we can come together and make that, uh, appealing and from the planning department, you know, work with individuals on that as well.
Councilmember Baylor? Yeah, just a quick comment of how far we've come, nineteen eighty, uh, this was nineteen ninety, I walked into the little city hall, saw the city plan and I said, I, I think people are buying city lots. I'd like to look into building a house. He walked over, he got this book, it was about that thick, I guess it was just all the plots, you probably know it, and he flopped it down, he said, there it is, you wanna look? He said, I'd rather you hire a realtor to find them all, and that was the help he got from the city to this. Well, you've got colored photos and so, it's, we've come a long ways, thank you. Okay, any last comments? Senator Johnson?
I guess I might have a question for staff on the, you know, uh, the ones that you just mentioned up on Ski Hill, the orange mark does need subdivision. Having the city road go right through, one number changing to available that needs subdivision, is, is there any legwork that the city could do that would be cost effective to go through the process of changing that subdivision or that, changing that plat to make it be a more appealing lot to, to attract somebody or?
Yeah, so, that is gonna, that is gonna take a large amount of work and it's gonna take multiple different processes. As you can see in between those lots where the non-colored spaces are, that's right away, you know, um, if somebody comes and is interested in these, I mean, we're gonna need to be considering, um, right away vacations. And I don't know if that's something we wanna do now, um, that is, that is something we could do to get that out of the way. However, I don't know if we wanna wait because we don't actually know. However, I don't know if we want to wait because we don't actually know what someone's going to propose in the future. But, I mean, personally, you know, you control the money, you control, you know, all of that. I would say that it probably should be the city picking up some portion of the cost of re-subdivision of that because we should not have put a road through lots without dedicating that as right of way. We created this mess, so we should be partially responsible, in my opinion. Again, that will come back to you guys to make a decision on that in the future. It all is gonna come down to dollars and cents. So is there things we could do? I mean, technically, yes, I just don't know if it's best to do it now until we actually see what someone's interested in doing.
They must have put that road that way to go around the creek. And there's a big water course.
Yeah, hillside there, you know, it's like a nap.
Just a big water course that goes.
So we could have a ski hill. That's what it was put for.
Okay, any other comments on the motion as amended? Is a roll call?
No, doesn't have to be.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries and ends. No unfinished business? Yeah, thank you, Kevin. No miscellaneous business, council meeting attendance, discussion. Council members, Kinsman maybe brought this item, do you want to start us off?
Yes, this was and has been and continues to be a conversation that the community, I don't, maybe not, they don't bring it to anyone else, but I get in here and pull on this from time to time. I think some of that had to do with some current council members, previous council members. I'm not entirely sure all the history behind it, I'm okay not knowing some of the history behind it. So it just got me thinking and thank you, Susan, for putting this informative spreadsheet together. The idea behind it is just a distinction in attendance between teleconference and in-person. For me, it's striking a balance, knowing that we're a seasonal community, knowing that our, it's not just that our residents who live here are seasonal residents. We're also a volunteer council. So, I mean, that was what I found, it was eye-opening, some of what other municipalities pay their council members and mayors to work. And to be clear, that is not what I'm advocating for, but I wanted to take that into consideration. Being a volunteer position, there should be some leniency towards teleconference of that attendance policy. But that there still should be some kind of attendance written into our code that distinguishes between in-person and teleconference. After my conversation with the city attorney, with Holly, it was made pretty clear that touching, anything that would have to do with touching like a residential piece was pretty much off the table or would, it's pretty much decided at the state level and it's already been established that it's based off voter's registration. It was my understanding, I could, may, I may have misspoken a little there, but to me, that's convoluted. The simplest approach to it, to avoid someone who doesn't live in our community, who wants to be on city council, would be to have some kind of limitation on teleconference attendance to city council to ensure that whomever is representing our community has the community and the community's best interest at heart, at mind, and is walking the streets of our community that has an intention to be in our community. So that's, that's a big, long background of what has, where this is coming from and the discussion. I don't, I know there's a lot of knowledge here and I wanted to, instead of just bringing some kind of motion or anything straightforward, I really did want to have an open conversation. And I will just say what I've thought of is very, in my opinion, especially reading some of good comparables for other cities who have, like, teleconference attendance policy. For me, I'm thinking something very simple, a 50%. Attend 50%, so that's 12. We have 24 scheduled meetings. Now, to be clear, this doesn't include special, special meetings or work sessions. That's, and that's consistent with other municipalities as well, those are all excluded. This is for the 24 regularly scheduled meetings that we have. Being in person, 12. And that's just the baseline of where I thought would be a fair place to start. Now, that might mean that someone chooses to teleconference for the winter months. Or someone may teleconference for the summer months because they're a Fisher person or they want to, anyways. However, someone chooses, I don't feel like, again, being a volunteer staff and looking at the dynamics of our community is very diverse dynamic, that's people who live here, you're around the people who don't. And I feel like we, as a community, probably are serviced well when we are represented by all of those people.
Councilmember Carpenter? Thoughts?
I confess to not having combed through it as carefully as Councilmember Kinsman has, so I'm kind of amused by the one that, I guess it's Keen, I, or no, what was what? Anyway, there was one of these on the chart that said, oh, failure to attend council meetings for 90 consecutive days. That's a big, that's a pretty big margin. But anyway, yeah, no, I agree 100% that we want to ensure that we're getting as much in-person participation as possible, given schedules and, and I appreciate all the research that you've done to bring us the material so that we can be knowledgeable about other communities' practices.
So they join that for sure.
I just might point out that regardless of what Holly said, half of these communities on here say they got 90 days. If they're not a resident for 90 days, they're off.
And I think part of that came to the proof side of that.
Exactly, how do you prove that?
Because then we have, I mean, essentially asking, the only thing I can think of is our clerk to be the police on this and that is.
I mean, how do you prove that a person is out of town for 90 straight days? Do I see them at the airport? What's that?
It's a state that you're in town for, for a certain amount of time for your dividend.
You sign something and you lie, you're willing to lie.
I give them my Alaska Airlines, they'll accept your Alaska Airlines flight records.
If it's a numerical, yeah.
As proof, so anyway. Any other comments, Kristen?
No, thank you.
Congressman Shaffer?
Um, I mean, I guess for me, I'm not opposed to having some kind of guideline, but I'd also like to err on the way as far flexible as we can, you know, like, and be reasonable. Like 50% to me doesn't seem like a lot, but also I think that seems too stringent of teleconference versus in-person attendance. It's just with people's schedules, like we have people on council who fish or, you know, traveling the winter or, you know, I field schedules or people, especially now that we can do remote work a little bit. We know, remote work is more flexible now, so taking the opportunity to travel and be out of town for a little bit of longer at a time, but still be able to attend remotely, I think is a benefit. So, yeah, I would say 50% to me feels a little strong. But I, I guess I'm not opposed to there being some requirement just to ensure that, yeah, it, we do have people in health support out of the community. But, yeah, I mean, I really appreciate it having the flexibility of being able to participate remotely. Yeah, that's been useful and, I think, helpful and productive.
Congressman Jones?
Yeah, I, I can see both sides of this. We need to have flexibility. You know, I've used the teleconference capabilities quite a bit common for my vote. But I always try to make a point if I'm in town to make sure I'm in person. I do appreciate the effort that went into this. I agree with Councilmember Kinsman that I feel like it's time for us to evaluate this and decide to do something. You know, there's at least four different instances in the last 10 years I can think of where a council member is living in another community and serving on the council still. And it's always the community gets upset about it whenever it happens, so, and I hear about it. I'm not trying to single any one person out. You know, I would almost say I would like, you know, physically absent from rural for more than 180 days or something. But like you say, how do you enforce that? I like the idea of 50% teleconference, but, you know, maybe that is too stringent, I'm not, I'm not sure. But, yeah, I do support the concept of putting in some more stipulations into, if you're gonna serve on this board, you need to be a resident. But open to suggestions from around the table on this one.
Councilmember Baylor?
All right. I will be gone at least 90 days from secondly, if I retire now, I will be traveling. To keep your residency in the state of Alaska, you have to be here 182 days. That's the state's requirement, so I'm a resident of Alaska, 182 days, I'm a resident of Kurovka, 182 days is my final residency. The thing with me, if you look on, under my name here, I got three unexcused absences right in a row. I took a, just the way things can happen, I took a three weeks, three weeks vacation out of country, so I couldn't fall in. But in a span of three weeks, it just happened to hit boom, boom, boom. You know, if I was in between that, I would miss one week. So that's, so I've said this before, well, this community is made up of people from elsewhere. We all have family elsewhere, we have jobs that make us travel, we have help that makes us travel. So we want to be, I agree with there should be a cap, but we want to be careful about saying that you have to be in the, we've got people, we got another COVID thing, or you have, so that part of it, and I don't know what the answer is to that. Part of being, you know, it's kind of subjective saying that you're not part of the community, you're not understanding, especially when you write property tax checks, you wouldn't be involved in this community for sure. So I don't know what the answer is. I do know one other time that we had somebody that is doing like I am, spending more time off the winter. He finished out his term, but he stayed engaged, he stayed with it. I actually ran this by the mayor before our election because I did think about dropping off because we're traveling more. He said, hey, as long as you stay engaged and you're on top of what's going on in the community, you know, we'd like to see you on council. I think that's part of it. When you have a major vote coming on something that concerns the community, we only had five people show up. You were working, but even so, so you worked, I mean, how do we?
Yeah.
You know, were you sick the month before, did you have to go visit your mom the month before? That's why I'm saying all of a sudden, like boom, 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 oh, she missed three meetings in a row.
But working is excused, though.
Well, yeah, but even if, I'm saying that you're still not here, it's not excused, you know? I mean, that's, and we're trying to get in-person. So I agree with the concept, I just don't know where to draw the line and say, this is where we want to do. This, I think, was an unusual circumstance that we just went through. I think the number has decided that they are gonna stay out of town, so we walked away with it. I think, like I said, the previous one was, gosh, what was he, like a six-term councilman and two terms of mayor? And trying to get to the point where he was, so, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But if you come up with something, you're gonna have to have an exception for another COVID-type issue because we were told to stay away. I think, just from my own perspective of having spent 15 years on the council, I would much rather have a co-counselor or another councilman on the teleconference that has read their packet, that is engaged and have his willing. Because I've spent many a meeting with somebody sitting right there across the table from me that hadn't obviously opened the packet or read one word of the agenda prior to sitting down at that meeting. And that person is way more worthless than somebody who is engaged on the phone that has read the packet and is familiar with what's before them. So I guess I don't have a problem with teleconference myself and, you know, suggesting for 12 is certainly, certainly generous. And I don't think that if we went back, we'd have very many that hit that very often. There are a few in the past, I can probably think of the same three or four that Councilmember Jones has had. But I think staff is looking for some kind of a direction from us if we want to make some kind of a code change. So I think we need to head towards that if we're thinking of putting 12 or any of these other ideas that they had in here, so. I'd like to just make just more comments. And one is, you know, we've had a lot of seats get filled on the council that nobody ran against. We've had, we've had people come in the day after elections. So this isn't like people are clamoring to take these positions. I think if the, if the change gets changed where we're not running for seats anymore, I think we're gonna get more participation because I think some people feel, well, they don't want to run against Anne Schaefer, you know, she's my friend. But now that it's open, not really run against you, we may get more. Another thought is, paper usually does this, but, you know, that can be put out to the public as a little questionnaire, you know? Why are you running, da, 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 and are you a full-time 12-month year resident? You know, I mean, you can kind of, for me, I would have to answer no, and then it's up to the electorate to, if they elect you, then they elect you, or me or somebody that says that, you know? So that might be another thought process of weighing into. That doesn't help you come up with a number, but that might be a way to let, if somebody says, hey, I'm gonna be gone three, four months out of the year and you still get elected, you fuck that.
Congressman Kinsman, say your thing?
I would, I would just say, one, what I've seen so far in the past attending meetings, speaking to council members who are engaged council members, which if you're a council member and you volunteered to be a council member, you should be. But our conversation, the conversation, the dialogues are much more productive when it's in-person. When we have half of the group on teleconference, it's not a productive conversation. People are speaking over each other, connectivity half the time doesn't seem to work the way it should. So I would, I would speak to, it's more, it's a benefit for a council member to be able to do that, but I wouldn't necessarily say that it's errors on the side of being more productive when more people are calling in. So that's just what I've seen. The other thing, looking back at attendance, attendance in-person to council, which I've done, is, yeah, it hasn't happened very often, but you could clearly see the individuals who were teleconferencing 75% or more, they did live in the community. And it was, it was clear the individual had been living in the community. So there is a number that deters, especially for volunteer staff, that someone isn't going to fly in for our council meetings if they don't have to for free. So that helps to ensure that our community is being represented by individuals, whatever a number may be, that are interested in our.
Congressman Carpenter, again?
I can't make any more at the moment. I think I need to chew on it some more and I don't know if we could put it as a item four.
Can you shelf it and bring it back?
Well, no, I'm just, I, I just need to spend a little bit of time on that. I could see coming back to it, putting it on an agenda item four, August maybe, I don't know how Fall July is, but.
I understand it's nine o'clock at night, too, we're having this conversation.
What about the requirement for?
What about the requirement for a certain number to be present in person for, for I see several, several of the.
For different municipalities?
Yeah.
Yeah, the number varies, number four, number five, and then spelling it out in person and not. And I'll just, I was actually pulling away my red wrinkles there, and I say that because they're the most comparable to us who have an attempt. You can only have four in a calendar year, and you can't do more than two in a row. That, to me, is, for, especially the volunteer position, is stringent. That's too stringent. We don't need that. I'm not advocating for anything like that. Really, again, what I'm speaking to is using this attendance route to ensure we have people who live in our community. That is the intent that I have behind this. Have you? Someone who's paying property tax in our community, someone who's residence is claimed here, which I can't enforce that piece of it, so here's another avenue that we can use to pseudo-enforce this.
Did we really ever have anybody that wasn't a resident? I considered all those people residents still. They all owned property. They all attended infrequently, but they came. They were in town part of the year. The one comment I would have about, it could be very onerous on staff if we start doing the first four people who call me are the ones who are allowed to, you know, that sounds scary as all get out. And I just foresee a lot of canceled meetings, a lot of lack of quarums.
Councilmember Schaefer, say your name.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, I mean, I guess I don't know what it's like for staff when most of us are remote, you know, on the phone, but I think we would have a lot of canceled meetings or have a harder time getting meetings going if we required a quorum in person or only a certain number on the phone. I just, I don't think that's necessary. Unless there's a really strong objection from staff.
Well, more time to speak to you or talk about pandemic. And there's plenty of verbiage within other municipalities that covers pandemics and other states of emergency that excludes the teleconference attendance or attendance.
Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I would be more likely to, I guess, push for something that, like, but it's what the lawyer said we can't do, but physically absent for more than 180 days, like I said earlier. I would like to see us pursue that. I mean, it's, it's not really enforceable, but it gives a little bit of a guideline and a metric for you to self-enforce a little bit, like, hey, okay, yeah, it's in code, I'm leaving for six months, I'm probably not coming back, I'll just resign, you know. It's not necessarily something like, hey, we need to enforce this on anybody, but it gives you, I guess, a baseline to, and it's 180 days, it's the, it's the state rule for residency, so.
Just for the sake of, because I'm, I'm thinking about the considerations, I think I'm more inclined to look at the participation, actual participation in meeting requirements, just because, like what councilmember Kinsman was saying, you know, if, the discussions are so much better when we're all in the room together, when we're all around the table, and that's, I think, the bigger element. And I think if, if somebody is missing a bunch of meetings, a lot of our issues carry over from one meeting to the next. You know, there's discussion that we had at one meeting that decisions in subsequent meetings build on. So, I think the participation in the actual meeting is the bigger issue for me than the actual residents. So, I would tend to base something on that if we do change what we have in place so far.
A clear comment on that. I think I'd be careful about that, because how many times have we sat here and said, we're going to have a meeting on Wednesday and go, I can't be here Wednesday. Can we have it on Thursday? No, we'll have it on Friday. Now, the person that's right on the edge of those missed meetings, it's like, wait a minute, you know, I had this vacation planned, so.
Right, right, yeah. No, I, I, yeah, yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying, I would, I would use that more as a, some kind of criteria instead of somebody's residency, because what we're trying to do is make sure there's solid and comprehensive discussion around the table. But you're right. I mean, I'm not, I didn't mean, I wasn't trying to dismiss that or discount it, but I, anyway, that's all.
So, we've had good discussions this evening, and we're all sitting at the same table, but we can't come up.
Exactly, yes, thank you. Not yet, not yet.
This is a tough one for that.
If there's more communications on the phone, we'll be all right.
So, it sounds to me like we want to chew on this and have it on the next agenda, or we want to.
Or maybe August. I don't know how full July could be.
Think about it.
I don't know.
Think about it for a while.
How many of us will be on vacation?
So, the other intent behind this was Holly suggested that this, something isn't placed to code before the next election, so whoever wants to fill a seat knows what the clear criteria is for the seat that they're going to be, or that's not a seat, for being a council member.
It is a seat. We're only just putting that on the election for the next.
That's true, so.
There's still seats.
So, whether we move this till even the fall, I think is still something we can have in code.
Okay, well, let's talk about.
I've got a question. If we move this forward, is it something that has to go on the ballot or is it something we can just change ourselves?
No, I think most of this would just be code changes, but.
That was the other reason I looked at, once we start doing residency pieces, that also is part of the charter contract, which is then goes before election, and this is the, what I could see the simplest way to just go forward, us as the council, to change the code.
Okay, well, that puts us right into pending agenda. When do we want to put it on? September, August, or is it fall? Can you just do that, but revisit attendance, something like that?
Yes.
What else do we have for pending agenda? We have the Sheridan Association is going to give us a presentation next meeting.
Sheridan and maybe NVE.
And isn't the fifth one we have the, oh, we're doing the noon, or do you?
Noon on the fifth. There were, there was a harbor commission meeting where Tony said at least three said they could be in attendance, which is fine, because it's a work session and we're not making any decisions, and it doesn't have to be a quorum.
Okay.
So, noon on the fifth, we're having a work session with the harbor. Sorry.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I guess for the, putting it on the agenda for the future, we already have it as A10, so maybe just change the date to.
Fall. Continuation of discussion.
And thank you all for, I'm going to have to take you for the conversation. That's what I need.
I got, I don't know, the land use, I've brought this up before, and we've kind of touched on it as far as property being, in my opinion, whatever lots that we sell, they should be geared towards residential, you know. And I don't know if that's something that we should ask, task the planning and zoning commission to come up with or ourselves, but I, I guess what I'm thinking is if we had some type of resolution stating, you know, our priority is land, or is land use is housing, then the next person that comes in here and says, I'm going to sue you because I want to put a warehouse, and at least we'd have, before they ask, we'd have this recommendation that, you know, we're trying to sell. Does it make sense? I mean, somewhere to go down that line, if we agree on it. I think it all should be sold for housing. I don't think we should have any more boat storage warehouses on residential lots.
I think with our, our disposal process, they have to, they put in our, we request RFPs, request for proposals, and then they would propose, and if they came up with a warehouse and council decided, no, we want a house here, council has the prerogative to say that.
Well, if we do an RFP, you could say.
You could say you do a RFP.
The priority, the priority for that.
We decided at that point, yeah.
Okay. Because we did that, and the gentleman wanted to buy the lot next to, on the swamp. And then, you know, and his initial plan was put a warehouse, and it came all the way to us. And I guess I'm thinking if, if we would send this down to the planning zone and say, look, our priority is houses, so we're not going to come that far, I don't know. But we went to a lot of rigmore, so did the applicant, and we said, no, we're not going to sell it. Yeah. No, we did sell it, but the price up high, I'm sorry. Okay, I'd just like to see him go to housing.
I would agree with Kristin. At the times we decide to go out for RFPs, you can say priority is housing. We'll get, you know, we could double the points for a house or whatever.
Yeah. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that having a dwelling is definitely a priority. I, it doesn't necessarily have to be a house. It could be a triplex, it could be a fourplex, it could be a warehouse and an apartment. You know, I, I wish my warehouse had an apartment in it so I could rent it out, you know. It's, you could get the best of both worlds there, so. I don't want it. It's halfway there.
Anything else you have for the agenda?
No. I'm okay.
Helen, anything? Anything comes up, I'll just put it there. Hey, you got, you got two next Wednesday? Okay. Audience participation, comments on anything at all, whether it's on the agenda or not?
Hi.
Hello.
Katrina Hoffman, 301 South Second Street. I wasn't planning to come to council tonight, but I had to check in on my child, who was apparently doing the worm on stage next door. But this was an interesting discussion, especially about council residency and attendance. And so, I just wanted to reflect a few of my thoughts back to you, having listened to you all. I heard Ken mention calling in from a vessel. I can think of many fishermen in this town, including my husband once upon a time, who prosecuted fisheries all over the state or still do today. If they live in Cordova, but they're gone nine months of year on a boat somewhere, which they may or may not own, and they may or may not keep in this harbor, does that make them less Cordovan, less, less welcome to serve on council? Something to think about. I really liked Tom Baylor's suggestion that, you know, candidate forums or candidate questionnaires, a lot of which get published in the newspaper or online, that, you know, a question can be asked of the candidate, do you live in Cordova year round? And just let them answer, and let their peers decide how important that is to them. Some, I've seen some candidate forums where a candidate doesn't answer any questions, and that provides information to the folks that are voting as well. I also urge you to consider if a prohibition against some quantity of telephonic participation is ableist. There's a lot of wonderful community members who are, they could be a rich contributor to discussion and decision-making. They could be on the autism spectrum. They could have an anxiety disorder. They could have long COVID. Their spouse could be receiving cancer treatment from out of state. They could be wheelchair-bound, which you could say, well, this building's accessible. Well, when it's blowing 30 in November and you can walk in, but they have to go over potholes in that wheelchair in a parking lot and take three times as long as some of we do, some of us more mobile people do to get into a building, that's an issue, too. So, you know, statistics say about 25% of US adults are disabled in some way or another, invisible or visible. So, I urge the council to consider if your solutions might have unintended consequences of discouraging participation from folks who may have a disability that you don't recognize. And I also thought about what Susan said. I looked at some of those, you know, ordinances or policies from other communities, and I thought, man, for staff to track some of that stuff, and where do you draw the line? You know, can I call Susan a year in advance and say, put me on the list for the next 12 months, because I'm going to be doing a lot of traveling, and I'm the first one to call her, and of those three or four people allowed to be telephonic, you know, like, just where do you draw the line, and what is the burden for staff? That one could be tricky as well. So, I'm with you. I see both sides of the coin. It's really tough. I've scratched my head over some of those, you know, where a counselor is obviously not living here most of the time, even though they're very deeply connected to the community. So, I just offer those points for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Greg Meyer, One Canterbury Row. I'm delighted that you guys are opening up more property in town for folks to build houses and stuff. I'd like to remind you that two years ago, Canterbury Row, I'll change my hat here, Canterbury Row Inc. put a proposal in, and it got tabled. I haven't heard word, I didn't, I was at two meetings, never asked a question, haven't heard from staff two years. I just, I'm perplexed. I don't know what's going on. You guys always say housing's a proprietary, a pri, priority, but then when someone in town raised a family here, bought lots of equipment to do developing, has money, puts in a proposal, just, and the proposal is just to communicate with the city manager. It wasn't to purchase or anything. And, and there's nothing, you know, he, he, he. So, I'm just, you know, perplexed and curious what's going on, so, anyway. Like I say, thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
I'm back again, Cecilia Lee, 400, February row. Thank you for considering and taking the time to discuss it. My concerns, I really appreciate it, and I want to applaud Mr. Johnson. He has been patient, professional, and we've had discussions. He's offered information, and he's been a great advocate for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that goes it for the audience, except for staff, so on to council comments. Councilmember Jones?
Thanks, everybody, for coming. I think this is the first time we've ever turned the mics off.
It wasn't a good night to do that.
I know.
It's really hard to do.
I could have had them on. I put them away because I thought we were having a teleconference. Sorry.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kinsman, thank you for the conversation. Kristin, I'm going to call you Kristin, in your capacity that you presented your information. That was very good information. I, the thoroughness of it was fantastic, and I think just a great opportunity for our community to even just begin a dialogue. And hopefully that is received in the community that way, and, but thank you for you, the work you did, and presenting that to our community. For both, I mean, I can broadly say staff, but from, we heard from today, Kevin and Tony, I just boldly thank you for a lot of the work you've put in. Tony, in the harbor, Kevin, and, and the new land disposal, not a small feat, so, thank you. And then hopefully I look forward to some more conversation on what it looks like to have more, hopefully, in-person conversations with council members, productive and engaged. I mean, it's one of those engagement from a council member is another burden that we put on staff, I guess, like how do you determine who's more engaged, less engaged, but I appreciate, at least tonight, I'll speak to it, everyone was engaged and, and seemed to have at least opened their packet, say that, more than that. So, thank you, everyone that makes it well worth my time to come and do these things as well. And hopefully we're all looking at it that way, that this is a burden on our own individual time as well, volunteered or not. So, more, I can justify that in my mind more when everyone comes to the table prepared to have conversation and dialogue, whether we agree or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, well, thanks, staff. It was really good information for the hospital. I've said this before, too, that I don't think residents realize whether they use the hospital or not, they eventually will support it with their tax dollars, because if we don't get patients in, and we used to chip out almost a million dollars a year out of our tax rolls since Dr. Sanders took over, it's been, it's been nice, but we're still right on that edge. Always great to hear from the audience. There's some great points brought up, and I like it when people contribute, so that's really well. Mr. Meyer reminded me, he was talking about his property. There was a, a Supreme, recent Supreme Court ruling on the city's taking land from residents and kind of clarified that basically you will pay the value of the property. So, that was spelled out very clearly, so, something for us to keep in mind. So, thanks for everybody being here.
Councilmember Kerpen?
Thank you, yeah. Certainly thanks to staff, Kevin, and Tony both for the work done to make our, make it possible for us to have really very well-informed conversations, so that's been great. I look forward to conversations with NVE, planning about for their facility, and planning about how we can work a little bit more closely as partners. That would be great. And if folks have other suggestions for how we can circulate this information about the Prince of Exeter Ferry Authority feasibility study, if you have suggestions for other groups, we should reach out to our other forums. I would be all ears for suggestions. That would be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yeah, I have all the same without thank you from staff, and I really appreciated the presentations about Berry and the hospital, and appreciated the community input tonight, that was great. And, yeah, just one more thought to add to the putting, you know, too restrictive, you know, guidelines to, you know, teleconference versus in-person meetings is also, you know, potentially parents, you know, with that, that don't have childcare, you know, twice a month, you know, like getting child, you could open up an opportunity for someone who isn't all community invested, but needs just more flexibility in how they, how they attend, so. Any other comments?
Okay, we don't have an executive session?
No.
Okay, our business being done, and we will be adjourned.